Call the meeting order, please. Call the roll.
Mr. Brule?
Here.
Ms. Escalante?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Monk?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Ms. Jarrett?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Ms. Walker text me about 10 minutes ago and said she had just got into an accident.
Oh, my.
Somebody ran into her, so she won't be participating.
Oh, my presence.
If she texts me, I will give an update. I'll let everybody know. A form has been established. Next on the agenda, I'll recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda, our citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting that you, the citizens, can address the board with any of your question, comments, or concerns. We ask that you be recognized by the host. I think there's a little wave where you can wave, or if you have a question, just state, you know, say, "I have a question," or "I have a comment" during the citizens' comments portion. Also, be mindful that you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. And last, be mindful that you may not receive a response to your particular inquiries tonight, and I ask you to address all questions, comments, and concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments.
I have my hand up.
Okay, hold on.
This is Mary Campbell. Yes. My name is Mary Campbell, and I'm an ECSC teacher at King. The words I share with you tonight are my own, but I know that many of my staff members at King share the same sentiments. I have spoken with my fellow ECSC staff and the ancillary staff there. I am worried about teaching and staying safe during a pandemic with numbers that are increasing daily. I am not just worried about the health and safety of my students and coworkers, but also of that of myself and my family. As you know, I sit or listen to your discussions with our administrative team each meeting that has been held. I know that our priorities are the education and safety of our students and their families. I want to acknowledge that as a school board member and administrators, that the decisions you have made regarding instruction and our families and staff have not been made lightly. You have been praised and criticized, and frankly, it's a no-win situation for you, the families and the staff. While it is true that COVID, the King hasn't had any COVID quarantines for students or staff, we all know that it's just a matter of time. I'm not asking that instruction be halted. I am asking for the ability to work with our children on an individual basis so we can address our IEP goals the same way we were doing in September. Frankly, I think it's a little ironic that the only teachers who are being asked to teach face-to-face are the teachers who did not receive the hazardous COVID pay from last spring. And as a teacher, or as a mom and a teacher, I encourage my children and students to do what is right. But tonight, I am going to ask you, as school board members, to do what is right and what is safe. Let us work with our children safely. Let us bring our children in to meet with us one-on-one, and let us all be safe. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. The agenda is still open for citizens' comments. You have to help me out, Pat.
You know one waiting, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. The agenda is still open for citizens' comments. Last call for citizens' comments. You see anyone, Patrick? Mr. Lynn Merritt?
No, sir. No one's unmuted.
Thank you, sir. The moving the agenda. Next on the agenda is item five, the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we have A, approval of minutes, the October 21st 20 regular meet, 2020 regular meeting, the November 9th 2020 special meeting, the November 12th 2020 workshop. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the agenda item.
All moved.
Moved by Mrs. Jarrett.
Support.
Seconded by Mrs. Escalante. Questions, comments on the motion on the floor. Here, we're seeing none. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brule?
Yes.
Ms. Walker? Oh, sorry. Mr. Monk?
Yes.
And Ms. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Agenda item 5B, approval of bills for payment. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the bills for payment.
All moved.
Moved by Mrs. Jarrett.
Support.
Seconded by Mrs. Escalante. Any questions, concerns, discussion regarding the motion on the floor, approval on the bills for payment?
Question?
Yes, sir. Mr. Brule?
All right. I'm just looking at my screen, and I don't see item 5B on my screen, so I don't know if the public would be as confused as me. I'm fine with the measure, but it doesn't say that on the five, doesn't seem to have a B portion.
Oversight on my behalf, Mr. Brule. I apologize.
It's on my agenda, and it's on your boarded package agenda.
No, I get it, but it's not on the screen.
Okay, now I see it. Got you, got you. Understood.
For the public.
Understood. So there appears...
My mistake, Mr. Brule. I apologize.
There is omission for the public watching. There should be consent item 5B, approval of bills for payment. That's what board member Brule was referring to. It was a mix-up in agendas, but it is an item that was publicly posted to be dealt with in the public meeting. So I'm still, any other, any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? You're gonna seeing none? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brule?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item six, business committee, 6A, audit presentation. This is Bill.
Good evening. Tonight, we have an audit presentation from our auditors, which are Reiman and Ken is here to, Ken is here to present, I believe, the audit, if not, Mrs. Potter is.
Actually, auditor Nathan Balderman is here to present.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Nate Balderman, the audit principal. Been here in past years to present the audit results. Tonight, just wanted to just kind of briefly go over the results of the audit and where things stand. I understand that Ms. Potter went over the results of the audit at the last meeting, or I believe at the workshop, and you should have seen these before, but, you know, definitely. I'm just gonna go through a couple of different items, point out some things that were different, and then also talk about the overall results. Feel free, though, if you do have questions, you know, to interrupt me as I go along. The opinion that we, well, I guess I should start with the audit itself, was definitely unique. It was done completely remote this year. Say, that's the first time we've ever done an audit like this. But we did, this was what we did with all of our school districts, just in the best efforts of keeping everybody safe. Want to thank the district for working with us in this, especially in the year of transition that we did have, working with a new team. I think things went relatively smoothly as best they could when you can't actually be there in person, and I'm definitely looking forward to doing our audits, hoping next year, this will be much different, and we'll be able to be back to doing things in person, so. So the overall, the actual opinion that's issued on the financial statements is what's considered to be a clean or an unmodified opinion. It's what you're hoping for in an audit. And so... So it's a clean, unmodified opinion. I apologize. Little distraction here at home. On the financial statements themselves, the things that were, most everything was very similar to what it was in the, in previous years as presented. No major changes to the implementation of new standards or anything of the like. There was a delay that was given. I know we've been talking in previous years about implementation of a new standard related to fiduciary funds and which would have affected your student activities. But in the midst of the pandemic, the Government Accounting Standards Board issued a standard that actually delayed the implementation dates of those, and so allowed districts to wait until next year. And with everything that was going on, definitely understandable that we would delay that implementation till a future year. The actual result, the results for the general fund, if you have your report in front of you, it would be on page 20 of the report. But kind of the focus that most districts are looking at is the general fund. You have the budget to actual statement for the general fund that is included in your report and shows a decrease in fund balance of $563,000. That's in comparison with the original budget. If you look towards the bottom of page 21, the original budget had a projected increase of $554,000. The final budget amendments had a projected decrease of $56,000, and then the actual results was the, was a decrease of $563,000. There are various reasons for that, or some emergency expenditures that happened during the year, that type of thing. But I did want to point out, and there's actually in our findings, there's a finding related to this. There's several pretty significant budget variances, budget overages that happened. And by state law and the expenditure side, you're really supposed to amend the budget to make sure that, you know, because it is the authorization to spend, and it appeared based on what we were looking at, those amendments did not get made during the year, and those have to be made, you know, prior to the end of the fiscal period on June 30th. So we saw a lot of variances in our school districts this year on the revenue side, but the expenditure side is something that we didn't see near as much as what we did this year here. So the, the other thing that I wanted, the other section of the report, if you're looking at the report, to kind of highlight is the single audit report, which is at the very back. It's the other part of the report that's ours in terms of where you can see the actual results of our audit procedures. There's a summary schedule on page 75 that summarizes the auditor's results in terms of findings, those types of things. So on the financial statement side, when we're doing an audit, first, as I said, we had an unmodified or a clean opinion. That's what you're looking for on that. When we're doing an audit, we also look at internal controls in order to plan our procedures and perform an audit, so we can give you that opinion. We don't get, actually give an opinion on the financial statements or on the, on the internal controls. We give an opinion on the financial statements, but not on the actual internal controls. But we are required to report things that come to our attention, and we did have some matters, as I said, a couple of significant deficiencies that we're reporting that I'll get to in just a minute. The other part of our audit, then, is our audit of the federal awards. This year, we tested the Title I program, and in that process, when we test that, when we select the program, we go through a risk assessment process. When we select the program we're gonna test, we do testing of internal controls over compliance as well as compliance itself. This year, we had a significant deficiency on internal control over compliance as in some specific items that were considered to be non-compliance, but didn't raise to the level of being material. So we're still able to give an unmodified opinion on compliance on that federal program. But like I said, we did have a couple of different items that we did report as findings. So the other thing I want, before I get into the findings, that I wanted to point out is, you know, the level of federal dollars that are flowing into schools now is very significant with all of the CARES Act money and that type of thing, but none of that actually flowed into the district for the CARES dollars and was recognized this past year. There was some, there, when they, when they made the cut to state revenue of $175 per pupil, they had put in some money to replace that, but it was, had strings attached to it, plus based on accounting standards, because they didn't make that allocation, and until after year-end, it couldn't be recognized. So even if you had expenditures that you could have claimed because of the rules related to revenue recognition, you couldn't recognize that revenue into the past year. So that will be coming in and recognizes revenue during fiscal year '21, and those funds also will be a part of your single audit next year, and we'll have to perform procedures on that. Many of those procedures, which we still don't know what they're going to be, because the feds are, still have not issued all the guidance for auditors to be able to audit the funds. So the two, the specific matters that came up as findings during the audit this year, the first item was related to unauthorized compensation. There was, in looking at your board policies, there were some payments made towards the end of the fiscal year that didn't meet the criteria. They weren't specifically approved. And in our opinion, it, because of the types of payments that were made, they should have been approved by the board based on your policy, and that did not happen. So that's what finding one is related to. The second finding is related to, when I talked earlier about the budget variances, the amounts that were here were significant enough that we felt that it really represented a significant deficiency. They were pretty large dollar amounts when you look at your total budget, and especially considering the use of fund balance that you had and where it put you in as a fund balance position at the end of the fiscal year. Thought it was of particular note that those items that, is something that needs attention to make sure that those budget amendments are made. I mean, if, for no, for, for one purpose is to make sure that the board is completely aware of things, where things stand, and put that down into the actual budget document. The third finding related to payroll charges under accounting or under the uniform guidance, payroll costs are, there's certain requirements on how you have to document payroll costs. For one of the individuals selected in our testing, that payroll documentation, the personnel activity report was not, was not available for that person. Because of the dollar amounts, there's certain requirements where we have to question costs if dollar amounts rise to a certain level that it didn't raise, didn't rise to that level, so there's no question cost related to it. But it is something that needs to be shared up and make sure that, you know, there's documentation for everybody that's charged to those federal grants. This is an item, usually where you end up getting into a position where the state might consider taking money back is when there's those question costs, they start looking into it more. But when there's no question costs, typically, you're not looking at any kind of issue in terms of that with grant funds. The last item relates to, there is a requirement, and a requirement that we look at and have to test. Whenever you have an allocation over a certain dollar amount, there's a certain amount that has to be set aside for parental involvement activities, and you have to set aside that 1% for that, and then you also have to specifically distribute the majority of that money to be in compliance. So the total dollars we're talking about are pretty small, but it is something where that technically, it's not in compliance. We didn't raise it to the level even of a significant deficiency, but we're required to report that to you based on the federal and the MDE guidelines, so. Those were the issues, the only findings that we had. We did have a separate letter where we had some other items related to payroll documentation that we included as a separate finding, or as a separate management letter comment. So it doesn't write, raise to the same level that some of these other things, but there was in our separate letter a comment related to that and about how management could more, better secure and follow the procedures that are in place at the district and retain all of the documentation-related employees. No question, we didn't have any question on those items related to people being paid incorrect amounts or being paid incorrectly. It was just a matter of maintaining the appropriate documentation for those individuals. So, and the rest of that letter that we issue is just more standard communications that were required under standards to communicate to you, so we put it in written form so that you have it. But a lot of the things that are covered in that are things that we cover, that I covered in the rest of the presentation. It's more of, you know, if there's certain areas that are of concern, we would bring those up, but those areas of concern, I would also bring up in this forum, in this meeting, if need be. So with that, definitely would entertain any questions, but, you know, thank you for your time, so.
I guess, sir, I have a question. Let's start. I'm looking at page 80 in the financial statement, a single audit at compliance.
Yep.
And more concerned with finding 2919, I mean, excuse me, 2019-002 allowable cost slash cost principle payroll charges repeated. And in your, it looks like it's a repeat, you know, you repeated it as a finding for 2020-003.
Correct, yes.
And that we had this, you had this finding last year, and as you looked and reviewed this year, you still did not, it did not meet an acceptable level to resolve the issue that we had from 2019.
Correct. It was, it was the same type of issue. I don't think it was the same number of items, that type of thing. It was one out of 40, but it was a, it was the same allowable costs, the cost principles, the documentation. There was still an issue for one out of 40 this year.
And going to your finding for 2020-003, that same repeat that I just mentioned, 2019, and the question costs, it says, "No costs have been questioned as a result of this finding." I know you talked about that, but can you explain what that means to me again?
Yeah, so under the uniform guidance, when we have a finding, we have to, part of our process is we have to look at the dollar amount of what was, what was included in the finding. And so if there was, and then there's a, there's a process that we go through that we have to say, the requirement is if there is like known or likely question cost greater than $25,000, then we have to report the amount to you. So basically, what we have to do, like in this instance, is it was one out of 40, so we have to go say, okay, we didn't have the support for this one, so how much was that dollar amount? Look at our total population and then say, is it likely that, based on our sample, that the amount that's out there is greater than $25,000? And if the answer is no, we don't have to report it. If the actual dollar amount of that person that we tested was over $25,000, we would have to report it as well. So we went through those calculations and determined it's not likely that amount was greater, so we don't report anything. And honestly, part of that is, we, we, I'm really careful about that, because the state does look at these amounts, and they, you know, they, they sometimes will use that and say, okay, we're gonna take the money, even though they don't go back out and do the work. Sometimes, they will take the money back, and we're not necess, we're not really saying this person didn't work, and it wasn't allowable expense. It was just the documentation that's necessary wasn't included, so.
Understood. Any other question by board members? I don't want to monopolize the questions. There's any other questions, wave your hand or unmute yourself so I can recognize you. No one?
I want to say, good job in the audit, being that it was straight from the virtual perspective. That was a hard task and pretty detailed information. I would say thank you for that.
I'd like to second that, but Earl, to answer your question, we really answered a lot of this stuff on our workshop, so.
Oh, yeah, I understand. Yeah. I always have to ask the questions. If anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns. Okay. Having no additional questions or comments or concerns, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Nathan, for, for your presentation and the audit, and I'm pretty sure that the current administration will have, have addressed the issues that were raised. I saw the responses on how to, how to resolve those matters, and we have to continue to work to do that as a board. So with that, I thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, too. Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to receive the audit.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Jarrett, and I heard a support. I think it was Doc.
Yeah.
Moved by Mrs. Jarrett, seconded by Dr. McFadden to receive the audit report as presented. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Here, we're seeing none. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brule?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Agenda item 6B, 2020 slash 21 budget amendment. Mrs. Bills?
Now pass this budget amendment over to you, Mrs. Potter. This is the first budget amendment that we are presenting since our budget, since we initially presented our budget. I believe that was in July. Mrs. Potter has been working on getting everything in order and organized, and I think we're there. Mrs. Potter?
Good evening. We are presenting our First Amendment budget proposal. This budget is brought to you because... Uh, this budget is, um, brought to you because we have a significant variance in our, uh, revenue stream that is a result of several factors. The first factor is an impact because property values actually increased. So property values over, um, the original budget are higher. In addition, state, um, funding is also going to be higher than projected last year because we have had a reinstatement to our foundation allowance to the previous pre pandemic amount of eight thousand five hundred twenty nine dollars per student. And we are being allowed to implement the super blend count, which has resulted in an increase. And our federal awards are also up as, uh, Mr. Baldorman said, there's a lot of CARES grant funding that has also had an impact. As grant funds go up, so do expenditures. And so we do see an increase on the expenditure side as well. The other significant change, of course, is the beginning fund balance, which, as we've just heard, um, was not targeted correctly. And so we have a decrease in our beginning fund balance from seven hundred and sixty six thousand eight hundred forty two projected to an actual of two hundred fifty nine thousand eight hundred sixty four. And so in looking at, um, the expenditures, there was also attached in the workshop and in this presentation as well, some information. Do you want me, does the board, would the board like me to go through it? Or do you just have any questions? Or how would you like me to present this?
They go through it.
Okay. So moving into expenditures, we have, um, basic instruction. Basic instruction, um, includes all function codes in the state, um, coding manual that start with a one one zero through a one one nine. And in this section for instruction, we're calling it total instruction. So we're also including added support, which is all of the function codes that start with a one two zero through one two nine. And the result here is an increase of projected expenditures by one million three hundred eighty nine thousand twenty five dollars. This can be explained in several ways. The first thing is that there was a negotiated piece for the, um, teachers' union. Um, and then the rest of it can be explained by federal grant expenses. As I mentioned earlier, we do have all of those care grants and a small bump up in our other normal federal title grants, which mean that we will have a bump up in expenditures of as well. Of all of the expenditures for care that you see here, we have, um, one point three million dollars of title grant funds, five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of state grant funds, seven hundred thirty four thousand dollars of CARES grant funds, an additional one hundred thousand dollars of shared county CARES grant funds, and a projected five hundred and forty four thousand dollars of P O high reimbursements through the I S D. Moving down to the next section of the expenditure budget is support services, which includes pupil support services as well as instructional support services. And we do show variances in both of these as well with increased expenditures. These can also be in explained by the wage increases, um, negotiated for the teachers' union as well as, and again, more of the same for, um, title great title grant expenditures as well as CARES expenditures. Um, and so that pretty much explains why these amounts are bumping up. The bump up is about four hundred and forty four thousand dollars over what was projected in the original budget. Moving down to the administration section, general administration and school administration is included in this section of the budget. General administration includes Board of Ed as well as Superintendent Office expenses. School administration represents principal office, um, expenditures. The general administration budget has been increased by fifty two thousand dollars, and this is explained by a bump up of expected legal expenses for the upcoming school year. At this point, we have bumped them up by fifteen thousand dollars. And also we now have some different coding for, um, how we are coding the superintendent. So in the past, as you know, there was, there was a shared service there between the business office and superintendent's office, and now we have two positions. In school administration, we're down slightly, and this can be explained by, um, a reduction in the budget for wages and salaries. Um, and so we will move on from there to business services, maintenance and operations and transportation. There is an increase in the business office. And that can be explained in large part, um, to an increase in salaries. Again, as I stated, we're now having two separate positions which are running through uh, our our financial books instead of one shared position. There's also some grant funding expenditures that are hitting in that section as well. And maintenance and operation, we see a five hundred thousand dollar increase. However, that can be explained by, um, COVID costs. So a large portion of that is also covered by our, um, CARES grants and other grants. So we are in the process of hiring more custodial to keep the schools clean and sanitized and protect against infection spread. Um, we've had to purchase P P E shields, monitors, thermometers, those kinds of things are all impacting and maintenance operations and security. And then we have a bump up in transportation. Transportation is being increased this year because there is no language in our current contract for forgiveness of schools shut down during a pandemic or any other, um, closure. And class are also increased as there is additional cost to cleaning the buses. However, we are utilizing CARES grant funding to help offset those increased costs.
Mrs. Potter, just, um, you had talked about, uh, custodios, um, for sanitizing and the P P Es. I know the P P Es, uh, that that's an allowable expense out of the CARES Act money. Uh, what, but how about the actual service and activities that are above and beyond regular custodial work for, and excuse me, for the sanitizing of the building, because that's above and beyond the normal scope of of work, but due to the COVID is 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 part of the routine now. But is that also an allowable expense under the CARES Act?
Under one of the grants, which is the original CARES grants, which was released back in March of twenty twenty. That is the least restricted CARES grant available for use in schools. And as these other CARES grants have, um, been opened up and released, we have been in a constant modification to move allowable expenses out of the original CARES grant over to those new CARES grants where they are allowed, which then frees up funds in that original CARES grant, which is the least respect restricted. So we are offsetting the cost of these temporary additional custodians using that CARE grant fund. We're also using that CARE grant fund to cover more P P E that we anticipate needing to get us to the end of the school year as well as additional cleaning costs. So we are doing all that we can to offset these additional costs using these these grant funds as allowed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So moving on from there, we go to central services, athletics, community service, transfers and other uses. So we have quite a bump up in central services. Central services includes all those things that are coded two eight zero to two eight nine, which includes a new, um, part time human resource director, our pupil accountant. But most importantly, this section includes non instructional technology. And we do see an increase there, um, because we are purchasing more technology, again, offset by CARES grant funding. We're also increasing technical support to the district as we become one to one. One to one for those who do not know means that every student will have their own personal, um, computer so that they have one to one technology where they don't share their their mobile and they're able to, um, learn with that technology, both in the classroom and remotely as needed. But of course, in the, um, expansion year, when we're just bringing this on, we anticipate the need for more technical support in our I T department. So we are offsetting more cost with those CARE grants there as well. Athletics is included in this section. The budget is a decrease over what was projected to seventy thousand nine hundred seventy one dollars. We will be bringing another budget amendment to you in, um, January is our projected next amendment for you. And I suspect that this number will go down because of the impact of the pandemic on our ability to even hold athletic events. But, um, this current budget was developed with, um, the consensus of the athletic director. She and I sat down and looked very diligently at her needed costs and historical data. And so, um, although this does reflect a decrease of twelve thousand dollars, I do anticipate that coming down for this year at least, um, because I do not think we will be able to offer as many, um, games and athletic events as we normally would. Finally, we have community services activities. Again, this is a section of the budget that was, um, talked about during audit. All of these include things like our equitable share of services to private schools within our district limits as well as activities to engage parents and community to further education for our students. So for the most part, everything you see on that line is related to a federal grant. Um, and then finally, we have building improvements. You will see that the current proposed, uh, budget is for fifty three thousand dollars. That fifty three thousand dollars represents the portion of the roof projects that were not completed in time to be included in the fiscal year twenty expenditures. This will change in our budget amendment when we address the energy conservation bond that we are proposing for repairing the middle school roof. But as that has not yet been approved, we are only including the fifty three thousand dollars that, um, was carried over from the prior year at this time. And finally, we have other issu- issuance costs, which include costs for securing, um, loans such as our state aid note, our tax advance note. And in this case, it is also including a projected one hundred thousand dollars shortfall in our cafeteria fund, which has been caused by the pandemic. So, um, as as the cafeteria fund has progressed through the summer, our service of meals has not met our expectations. And so as a result of that, the cafeteria has been operating at a deficit for the last, uh, four months. It is normal in the month of July and August to see a loss with summer feeding program. But normally, once the students come back and we're serving in the cafeteria during a normal school year, we are able to cover those losses for summer feeding, um, by the amount of meals we're actually serving and allowed to be reimbursed for during the normal school year. However, this year, um, because of the pandemic, we've remained remote. We have not had the call for meals that, um, we had anticipated. So, um, at this point, we are moving a hundred thousand dollars over to cover that projected shortfall. If we get to the end of the year and it's not as great as we fear, we will amend at that time. But we do, we are now implementing changes in our cafeteria program to to tighten down and control costs to an even greater degree so that we can stay within that variance to the best of our ability. So we finally come to the bottom line, and the bottom line is that we are recording a total revenue income incoming stream of sixteen million three hundred ninety thousand three hundred sixty dollars. To that, we can add our beginning, uh, fund balance of two hundred fifty nine thousand eight hundred sixty four dollars with a total appropriation of sixteen million six hundred fifty thousand two hundred twenty four dollars. We are appropriating at this point sixteen million two hundred eighty six thousand thirty seven dollars, which is, um, under our total revenue available by a hundred and four thousand three hundred twenty three, which will raise our, um, projected ending fund balance at this point to three hundred sixty four thousand one hundred eighty seven dollars, which according to a board policy based on revenues is a percentage of fund balance at two point two percent. That concludes the presentation. Are there any questions that I can entertain?
Before we get to the questions, I want to put a motion on the floor because this is an action item and then we'll have plenty of time for to ask questions. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion relative to the proposed, uh, twenty 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 one budget amendment of uh, sixteen million two hundred eighty six thousand three hundred and seventy dollars with a projected fund balance of three hundred and sixty four dollars and no, three hu- three thou- three hundred thou- three hundred sixty four thousand one hundred and eighty seven dollars.
So moved.
Moved by member Jarrett. Thinking a second.
Support.
Second, Miss Escalante. Now, are there any questions, comments or concerns on the amended mo- uh, amended budget proposal? I'll give folks time to get off of mute. If there are any questions.
I just got, uh, one comment. I just want to thank Ms., uh, the superintendent and Ms. Potter for, uh, going back and, uh, tightening up the, uh, some of the issues that we had at the workshop. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing the same none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Miss Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brule?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carry. Agenda item six C, add adoption resolution of the budget to the district webpage. Uh, Mrs. Bill or Mrs. Potter will want to lead in the discussion on that?
Uh, this is just a, a, um, request by my office that we change the way we post our budget on the mitten. As you know, um, in order to be in compliance with state regulations, we are required to post all of our approved board budgets on our, um, sta- on our website under that icon that looks like the mitten. And what this does is it is an actual resolution that clearly states that it was passed by the board, what the rights and responsibilities of administration are. And it also gives, um, the administration a little more freedom to accommodate budget requests as long as it doesn't change the bottom line in those sub totals. So the way that we've been doing it now, which has been putting up a grid view, we've been breaking it down. As I said, basic instruction is all of those function codes that start one one zero to one one nine. What that does is it, what this, um, resolution does is takes all of those small sub totals and rolls them into one, which for all intents and purposes allows me to move between those function codes with that are captured within that subtotal without coming to the board for approval because it will not change that bottom line. And, um, and that gives us the autonomy to to help our administrators and our school administrators see those budget changes. see those budget changes more quickly and make um sound decisions based on actual figures. So we are asking that you approve this change and that we start posting this new uh budget resolution on the webpage. This is not unusual. Many school districts use this resolution.
Okay, you heard the 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 proposal. Uh the chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item item six C, add adoption resolution of the budget to the district webpage.
Oh moved.
Moved by member Jarrett?
Support.
A member Escalante. Any discussion, concerns, questions on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Agenda item six D, twenty twenty energy conservation improvement bonds. I'm pretty sure that's you, Mrs. Potter.
Okay, so uh thank you, Mr. Rickman. This is a resolution to allow us to go out for a private energy conservation bond. The purpose of the bond is to repair the roof over the um one five five Cass Avenue section of our secondary complex. This would be a total roof replacement over the building and the catwalks that attach the um the two buildings together. I just had a meeting with um our bond attorney and P F M and have supplied them with all of the information. And the first step is the passing of this resolution allowing the district to go out for it. The process will be that we will um P F M on our behalf will email several banks privately with all of our um information, our financial information, our um financial documents and this board resolution asking them if they would be willing based on the information provided to work with us in providing a bond. What I would learn today is that we will need to create, and we are in the process of doing so, a separate account within our My Laugh account, which will be titled the twenty twenty capital improvements account. The turnaround time on this bond is very tight, unfortunately. So once this passes, assuming it passes, we'll be overnighting the resolution once it's executed by the required board members to our bond attorney. They will then take that, get the um invitations to bid out to those banks. Uh the banks then have two weeks. They are allowed two weeks to review all of the documentation and make a decision. The call for um bids to be submitted will be by eleven thirty A M on December fifteenth. During that time, the bids will um be opened and if a if we are receive the bids as we hope and determine the winner based on the best uh interest rate, then the money will be wired into that newly set up My Laugh account on December thirtieth. Um and so um that's going to allow us, once we um know that we've received some bids and we have something, somebody who's willing to work with us to then begin that R F P posting to try to find a vendor that will work with us within um the amount that that we've won the bid for and be able to perform the work. I'm not sure because of whether if if we'll be able to do that during the winter months or if it's something where we'll have to weather the storm and do that in the spring. But it is very important that we get this energy conservation uh resolution passed because if we do not, the interest rates will all change. These rates are are being guaranteed to be locked in through the end of December. If we can't pull this off, we will not have time to do it. We'll have to start the process over and we don't know what the rates will look like. So that is what the urgency is in getting this done as quickly as possible.
Ms. Potter?
So thank you, Mr. Monk. Uh chair would entertain a motion relative to uh item uh six C, the twenty twenty energy conservation improvement bonds.
Oh move.
Support.
Monk, second by member Escalante. Mr. Monk?
Yes, Ms. Potter, this uh this uh bond bid, is this what you were talking about? And wanted in the workshop, is this that not to exceed bid?
Correct.
Was that? Okay, this is what that pertains to. Okay.
Yep, you're welcome.
Mr. Chair, it was Ms. Jarrett that approved it.
I'm sorry, um.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, um let the record reflect it was moved by member Monk, second by member Jarrett. Any additional questions, comments or concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Agenda item six E, approve resolution to collect summer taxes. Think that would be you once again, Mrs. Potter.
Okay, uh this is a standard thing. By law, the board must approve um a resolution by um December first of every year to allow the school district to collect taxes in the summer. Summer tax collection helps Mount Clemens Community Schools tremendously because we start to see some revenue coming in from local sources and it can also help us to um lower our state aid note amount. So we are asking that you approve this resolution so that we can get this out to the local taxing authorities and guarantee that we will collect our taxes during the summer collection.
Thank you. You've heard the proposal. The chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Escalante.
Port.
Second by member Jarrett. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor to the resolution to collect summer taxes? Ms. Potter, I know this is a routine thing, but can you explain that the district will not be sending letters to people about their taxes and ju- and just how that all that all works?
Correct. So this is a legal compliance issue. Um state law requires the board to approve a resolution and then all we are doing is sending that resolution to the local taxing authorities, which for our district is the city of Mount Clemens and the township of Clinton. And that just lets them know that when they are preparing their summer tax invoices, they need to include our eighteen mills. This would have no direct bearing on um on our on our residents in the city of Mount Clemens or within our school district. This is a simply a compliance issue that is needed by law.
Thank you for that clar- you know, just wanted people to add a clarification. Any additional questions, comments or concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Potter. Uh agenda items seven Policy Committee, seven A, Resolution Regarding the Open Meetings Act. Uh, Mr. Monk, you want to take that over and give it to Mrs. Bill?
Yeah, I'll yeah, I'll take it. And uh Superintendent, I'll I will uh refer to you to actually uh present the resolution to the board uh from your office. So but I'll give the background on it. And then after she does that, we take the vote on that. I'll come back with the rest of the policy, Mr. Rickman.
Yes, sir.
Um so for the background on the uh resolution regarding the Open Meetings Act, this special release is in response to the Senate Bill eleven oh eight recently passed by the Senate in House and signed by Governor Whitmer with immediate effect. This legislation amends the Open Meetings Act to permit virtual meetings and allow individual board members to virtually participate and vote in public meetings under specific circumstances. This resolution is offered for us during the period of time provided through the statutory amendment in lieu of recommending a temporary policy change. As as amended, O M A, which is Open Meetings Act, allows for the continuation of virtual meetings for any circumstances through the end of this year, December thirty first, twenty twenty, and provides retroactive application to deem as valid all virtual meetings that have taken place since March eighteenth, twenty twenty under the new now executive orders. And uh this is, this is for uh our state compliance for the O M A. And I will turn it over to Ms. Bill Superintendent to present the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Um I hope you can hear me. My internet for some reason is unstable right now, so I hope I don't cut out, which is why you can't see me. It seems to be better when my video isn't on. Therefore, now be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to create procedures to accommodate electronic participation by board members who are absent due to a medical condition or due to a statewide or local state of emergency declared pursuant to law or charter by the governor or local official or local governing or local governing body that would risk the personal health or safety of members of the public or the public body if the meeting were held in person. In the event of such an emergency, if the meeting location is usually held in an effective area, affected area, the entire board may participate electronically. Otherwise, only members who reside in the effective area may participate electronically. Um so, Mr. Monk, do you want me to read all of it? That's basically it. It describe, we talks a little bit about explaining um what electronically may mean, which is what we're doing right now, video or telephonic conferencing. The procedures have to provide for two-way communication, which we have been doing as well. Do you want me to read all of that?
No, you don't have to. That, I mean, that's the logistics of it. You know, like I said, this is uh for uh state compliance for the uh
Uh you you've heard the rationale. You've heard the resolution. The chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item seven A, Resolution Regarding the Open Meetings Act.
Oh move.
Moved by member Monk.
Support.
Second, Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Agenda item seven D, Policies for First Reading. Mr. Monk, um before you 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 um go into the policies, are these or state mandated policies?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, go on, Mr.
Alright, thank you. I'll try to make this quick for everybody. Of course, you know, when we do first readings, I'll be giving the background uh for the amendment for these policies. Uh then after that, um I'll come back and uh with the guidance of uh the chair, uh make a recommendation for first reading. Um, so I try to make this quick. Um state um State School Eight Act amended. A budget deal was recently passed by the Senate in the House and signed by Governor Whitmer. This legislation amends the State Aid Act effective September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Key changes in the law includes if a district receives money from the coronavirus relief fund, the district must continue to pay employees and contractors to the extent possible during disruption or closures caused by COVID nineteen. By January twenty fifth, twenty twenty, districts must create a report and make the report accessible through the transparency reporting page on the district website, specifically the amount and type of professional development provided to teachers on how to deliver virtual content and regarding training provided to parents and guardians on how to access and use virtual content. Districts must make the S A T and the P S A T available to certain students who are not able to take these exams last school year due to COVID nineteen. District may only encourage the students to take the exams this year, but may not require them to do so. The timeline for making a decision on requests to enroll and on enrolling a non-resident student as well as other deadlines with with respect to non-resident students have been extended to October thirteen, twenty twenty, under section one oh five C. This legislation corrected the requirement that a district board of education reconfirmed the COVID nineteen learning plans to reflect that this must be done monthly as opposed to every thirty days. Persons who are qualified to provide two-way interactions necessary to count online students have been expanded to persons other than teachers. Communications with other district employees who have responsibility for the pupils' learning, grade progression or academic process now count as well. If district apply for and receive funds under section thirty one K of the State Aid Act due to the district's forgiveness of all outstanding student meal debt, the district must adopt policy to prevent public identification or sterilization of students who cannot pay for school meals. In December two, in December twenty fourteen, the U S Department of Education A I released the newly updated Edu- Education Department General Administration Regulations, E G R. This major rewrite of the regulations was issued after nearly forty years of very little change and the compliance measures that federally funded programs must meet. The regulations covered the application process, financial management, procurement, inventory management, time and effort accountability, cost allowability, record retention and program oversight. The Office of Managing Budget, O M B, has now revised section of the O M B guidance for grants and agreements, also known as Uniform Grant Guidance, U G. Proposed changes to the law were published in the Federal Register in January twenty twenty. Comments closed on March twenty third, twenty twenty, and federal revisions were published in August twenty twenty. Despite the the despite the intervening pandemic, the O M B released a final resort revisions to the Uniform Grants Guidance law right on schedule. The revisions continue. The O M B's push for results-oriented ability accountability for grants significantly rewrites to sections on procurement in attempt to clarify prior requirement include provisions related to the period of performance and indirect costs. This revised rules are effective November twelfth, twenty twenty. These revenues, these revisions reflect changes outlined in the present, in the President's Management Agenda, P A P M A. This guidance is intended to focus on improved stewardship, here's that word again, and ensuring that the American people are receiving value for funds spent on grant programs. These revisions are limited in scope to support implementation of statutory requirements, alignment of these provisions with other federal requirements and clarification of existing requirements to minimize risk and final transactions. These new regulations will require some revisions to current policies. These procedures will miss necessarily be district-specific, providing a clear picture of how these functions are carried out.
Someone, can you please turn your uh device on? Thank you. Sorry about that, Mr. Monk.
No, no problem. The update includes the following documents. Policies sixty one fourteen, cost principles, spending, federal funds, revised. Policies sixty three twenty five, procurement, federal grant funds, revised. And for my O S A, emergency rule, emergency temporary tele- telecommute, telecommuting policy. This special update is being issued in response to the Michigan Occupational Safety and Health Administration release of emergency rules regarding Coronavirus Disease 2019, better known as COVID-19. The rule requires that all Michigan employees shall create a policy prohibiting in-person work for employees to extend that their work activities can feasibly be completed remotely. Specific details of such assignments are covered by current policies that deal with such issues as health, safety, technology use, security, confidentiality, and expense reimbursement. Such details should be included and revised as necessary in a district extended learning plan. The update includes the following document, Policy 8450.05, Emergency Temporary Communication Policy, new. Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Education accept the following policy for first readings. Policy 6414, Cost Principles, Spending, Federal Funds, Revised. Policies 6325, Procurement, Federal Grants, Funds, Revised. And Policy 8450.05, Emergency Temporary Telecommuting Policy, new.
Mr. Monk, I think you said 6414, then 6114. The first one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, 6114.
It's been moved by Member Monk to approve of the first reading for Policy 6114, Revised. Policy 6325, Revised, and Policy 8450.50, new. There are second.
Support.
Second, Mrs. Escalante. Reading. Do you have any questions, comments? I think, Mr. Monk, these are federally or state mandated, so we can't change or amend them. So they are what they are.
And we actually, and specifically, we need them because we getting all this COVID-19 funding.
Right, understood. Any questions, comments, or the chair regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing us in, call the robe, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Jared?
Yes.
Mr. Brule?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Information items, Agenda Item 8, Business Committee. There any questions, comments regarding Agenda Item 8A, Financial Reports? Agenda Item B, Open Purchase Order Listing. Agenda Item 8C, Contract Listings. Agenda Item 8D, Facilities Listings. Hearing us in, moving the agenda, Agenda Item 9, Superintendent's Comments. Madam Superintendent.
Hey, good evening. I'm gonna, if I break up, I'll turn my video off, but I thought I would leave it on for now so you can see me. The first item on my agenda is the reconfirmation of the COVID Learning Plan. Right now, in Instruction K-12, we are learning remotely until December 11th, which is a Friday. However, just seeing the way things are going in Michigan, Amicom County, my best bet for all of that would be that we will be, the students K-12 will be learning remotely until January 19th. We have two meetings the week before the 11th. We have a meeting on 12/8, which is our committee meeting day, and 12/10, which is a work session. So if something dramatically changes in the state of Michigan and everyone is healthy and fine, then we will open. But as of right now, we will not. Today, on our superintendent's call, Dr. Locar said the trends and cases are still increasing. So again, I wouldn't say I'm anticipating remote learning until January 19th. The anticipation, however, which is really interesting that I learned today, is there is an anticipation that vaccines will be arriving out the Health Department within the next two to three weeks. The very first people that will be receiving the vaccines are the healthcare workers. And then the critical infrastructure is the second group that will be receiving the vaccines, and it could be our schools. Right now, King is successfully still in session. There are extremely small numbers of students, and we have been able to accommodate parents and staff who request accommodations. At this point, I would like to entertain a request for comments of the public. That's part of our reconfirmation COVID Learning Plan, and this is a point in the agenda where we open for comments from the audience.
That's requested superintendent, under Superintendent's comments, so we can allow that. Paul, or I'm not sure who can see. I see that there's about 27 participants. If there's any questions coming from any of those participants, you, Paul, or someone have to control that because I can't see who the participants are and if they have any questions.
I have asked twice for an unmute, and so far, no one has requested to be unmuted. Ms. Campbell?
Yeah, it's Mary Campbell. I teach at King, and I want to once again make a comment regarding the safety factor of your staff, especially I can speak directly to your ECSE staff and your ancillary staff. We understand that our numbers are small. I want to make sure that my comments are not in regards to unwillingness to service our children. We know that it is necessary to service our children. Mrs. Beals has said in many meetings how important it is to be there for our students, and we agree with that. But our request at King would be to service our children on a one-on-one basis. And they've had in the fall, that's what we did. We had students coming in twice, once a week, depending on their needs. We cooperated with and arranged it with our OTs and our PTs and our speech people to be able to coordinate all their services. So I do understand the need to service our youngest learners as well as some of our neediest learners and, you know, possibly in the upper grades. But I am just once again requesting some more thought putting into whether or not we are going to be in a hybrid frame right now. I do have a small number. I have six students in my classroom. Of those six students, I have one of them who will consistently wear a mask. When you have five children who are not wearing masks, when you have two adults who are wearing a mask and one other child wearing a mask, it does make it challenging to remain healthy. And I know that I do service the youngest group of kids, and so their sensory issues and some of their needs, you know, prevent them from wearing masks, and that is understandable at this point. But when you're working one-on-one, it is easier to control that. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments?
Hearing us in, Madam Superintendent.
Okay, thank you. So going on to review our weekly two-way interactions with our students. We, the month of October 21st through November 18th through today, we had 98% interact, we had 98% positive interactions with our students. Breaking that down weekly, the week of October 22nd to the 28th, 99% of our students had a two-way interaction with their teachers. The 29th of October through the 4th of November, there were 98%. And 98% on the weeks of the 5th to the 11th and the week of November 12th through the 18th. We've been really working on delivering the laptops and getting those to all of our students. Right now, we still have 37 middle school students who have not yet received their laptops and 54 high school students that have not yet received their laptops. The student support team is meeting tomorrow to expedite delivery and making sure that all the students have been reached. As far as engagement goes, there were four students at the middle school that were rarely engaging and only two at the high school rarely engaged. Mr. Hannah has made 61 phone calls within the past week, and he's made several visits to families. I check in on Mr. Hannah just about every day, and I know that Mr. Duncan does as well. There's similar experiences that we are also having at Seminole. They are also delivering all of the laptops to their students. The last I heard, there were still 50 laptops out, but that was last week, so there may be even fewer now. So that's my reconfirmation COVID Learning Plan, and that will get submitted to the ISD tomorrow. I also want to extend a thank you to the Twaddle Group in Michigan. Mr. Eric Brule donated 30 laptops and chargers for our students. What they do in this company is every employee or the employees that get laptops from the company gets a brand-new one every year. So these computers were a year to less than a year old. They're in beautiful condition, and what we have done is we've started with our robotics team, and we've given those computers to the robotics students because the software that they need to run the programs for the robots does not do very well on a Chromebook. So we've started there, and we will also be using these computers to supplement the, in our school computer labs. And that is it for Superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Moving the agenda forward.
Earl, I got a couple of questions for the superintendent real quick.
Yes, sir. Sorry about that.
Superintendent, so we got 34 and 54 laptops. And if you don't know this, you can get, you know, get us the information later. How many of those, what's that, how many of those, how many of those 81 students who don't have the laptops, are those all still enrolled students, account for students, or are those students not accounted for, or is that a mixture of both?
Mr. Monk, I don't have an answer for you on that one. I do believe, though, that these are accounted for students, but I will double-check tomorrow and find out.
Okay, and then you said you had 50 at Seminole who still haven't.
Yes, yep.
Okay. And I think I asked this before, and if you get this to us, if you don't know it tonight, or if you do, what is the attendance rate on the AA and the BB groups when we were face-to-face?
I don't have those exact numbers in front of me either. I wish I had known that you would ask this question because I could easily have had it for you. I will get that as well.
I thought I asked about it in the workshop, so I thought you would, okay. Because I know I had it in my notes to ask it for today. Okay.
I'll take care of that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Brule.
Thank you. I don't expect an answer tonight, but I would hope that we could work something out at King that would provide the safe environment that for both the students, if there are students unable to wear a mask, it's not good to put them in the same room and with the teachers. So I would hope that something could be worked out to rectify the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brule. Moving the agenda, and next on the agenda, Item 10, Committee Reports. Any information coming out of the Business Finance Committee?
We pretty much covered, we had our meeting this week. We also discussed all of the business and finance issues in the workshop, so I don't see anything new that we have to discuss at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Jared. Any questions of the chair? Community Coalition. The Lennonberry.
Coalition has not met. We did have our Drug Takeback Day drive-through last month, and I have not received any numbers as far as how many pounds of drugs we're able to acquire.
All right. Any questions to Mr. Lennonberry? Thank you, sir. Curriculum Personnel.
Hey, Earl, we had a meeting last Tuesday via Zoom. Most of the topic was related to the budget and the finances as to the personnel. Little bit things in curriculum, but has been going through the COVID-19 situation, the issues. A lot of stuff was brought up at the workshop, I believe, because it was passed on through the superintendent, bringing up at the workshop. There's nothing additional to report.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Any questions of the chair? Educational Foundation, I have no report to make other than I understand that Mr. Lennonberry has graciously volunteered his services to that committee to bring some youthfulness to it.
I'm sure that was a year-old quest, Mr. President. If they're asking me to make them younger, then I'm concerned about this committee, sir.
Or is that Earl just throwing a towel in?
No, I'm still there. I'm still there, Mr. Monk. You know, they just don't communicate with me. Communicate with one of us now.
Right, right.
Hopefully, I'll have a committee report by next month, sir.
Yeah, hopefully, we have one.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Policy, anything additional to add, Mr. Monk?
No additional information.
Thank you, sir. Legislative Committee, they met via Zoom last night. I could not attend their Zoom meeting because I had a conflict with a previous Zoom meeting. That was, the legislative meeting was rescheduled from earlier in this month, and I already had a planned Zoom meeting on last night during the time that that Zoom meeting was. I have requested a copy of the minutes, and hopefully, we can be able to give a report, unless the superintendent has, because they generally talk about the same things, possibly in the superintendent's meeting. Pretty sure there was something around CARES Act maybe, or the COVID learning environment. Mrs. Beal, was there anything legislative we brought forth in your meeting? I know the legislation is off on a hunting break.
Yes, they are. There wasn't much in terms of legislation. Actually, there wasn't anything at our meeting today or on Monday. Basically, it was the county health update is what we had. So I'm sorry, there was nothing in terms of legislation other than talking about the closing of our, moving high school students to remote learning and restaurants and those sorts of things, but nothing we haven't all heard.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you. Agenda Item 11, Board Comments. Mr. Brule?
Thank you. I just want to thank all the staff, teachers, administrators, for handling what is a very difficult situation as best as we can. I also want to thank the parents for their consideration in handling a very difficult situation. We all look forward to the day when we can get a vaccine and return to what will be what we think is a more normal life. I hope we'll learn the lessons of care and consideration for each other and that we won't forget that in returning to normal life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brule. Mr. Monk?
Thank you, Mr. Rickman. Would like to echo what Mr. Brule just said. I'd like to thank the, I hope I, Tweedle? Is that the proper pronunciation of it? Tweedle Group? For the donations, always good to see, you know, partners in the community helping out. Greatly appreciate that. Just before I got on Zoom, listening to the news, USA passed 250,000 deaths today. Currently, right now, as of 11/17, Currently, right now, as of 11/17, the state infection rate for Michigan is 13.45, and Macomb County is 16.68. I just want to say be careful. Be careful this holiday season. My wife wants to see her son real bad because he our firstborn, but we told him to stay put. Do not come. He lives in Wisconsin. So me and my wife will be hunkering down at home. Good thing is that I ain't gotta cook a lot, which is good. So I might fry some catfish, you know, and call it a day. But we're gonna hunker down for the holidays. Say what?
I want a carryout plate.
Gotcha, gotcha. So we're gonna hunker down for the holiday season and stay put and do our part. And hopefully this thing will start to get better. Just want to say, you know, tell everybody to have, have the best holiday possible. I know it's not gonna be normal, but have the best holiday possible. And stay home and stay safe. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Dr. McFadden.
Thank you, Mr. President. My comments are gonna be very simple. Is I want to thank everybody out there for doing a great job. I mean, it's a tough job. It's hard. And I know a lot of people are scared, afraid, upset, nervous, anxious, but we still persevere. And our staff, even the staff across the state at all the school districts, the parents, the teachers, even the students, we're using common sense. And once we use common sense, it can all work easy and together, and there's no such thing as can't. And I believe that we're going to persevere. I know we're doing the right things, and we're gonna have some shortfalls. But I want to thank everybody, I'm talking about everybody out there, for doing what needs to be done. And sometimes it's hard, but you know, just pull your mask up, you keep your head forward, and we'll get through this together. And for those that lost family members, my heart goes out to you as well as them. I know our school board does also. But we there for you, and please stay safe. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Mrs. Jared.
Well, I'd like to echo the sentiments of the previous board members who went before me and add that staying safe during the holidays is a priority. I am with Mr. Monk and his family and everyone else's family who are staying home and telling their kids they are not able to join them. This is a difficult time of the year with the holidays, and we have to remain safe. I want to thank everyone for everything that you do. There are so many things that we don't even recognize, but we're there and we understand. Those are my comments. I'm kept in brief. Thank you. I really, really appreciate everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Jared. Mrs. Escalante.
Well, I just want to also echo off of all of my colleagues. I think we've all, we're all kind of feeling the same way. I want to say I'm thankful for each and every one of you specifically, and in this district and the heart and soul in this community. I, for some, it's way more difficult than others, and it's just, it's a crazy time, and we all want things to go back to normal. And we don't really know when that's gonna happen, but we have to keep the faith, and we have to know that, that we'll get through it. Like Doc said, you know, we will get through it. We'll come out on the other side. And, you know, I just wish you all a very blessed holiday. It's definitely gonna be different for a lot of us. And I think we just have to, you know, stay focused on the bigger picture and staying safe and staying healthy. And so my prayers are with everybody that's on tonight watching, all of my colleagues. And again, you know, we're just, I'm very, very thankful for such a hard-working district, for all of our staff, our teachers, everybody, everybody. Seriously, thank you. Thank you isn't enough for what everybody's doing and going through. And so again, I'm just thankful to be a part of this community, and I know that we will get through this. So have a blessed holiday, stay safe, and stay healthy. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Escalante. Echoing what my colleagues have stated in front of me, thank yous and kudos to the community, the parents, the students, the teachers, the support staff, administrative staff. We're all going down uncharted waters, off time, and it may seem as we don't know what we're doing, but this has never been dealt with before in history to our, you know, common, to, in over 100 years, I should say. And so there are times that you might be going down a path one way, and then all of a sudden you have to redirect your direction because of situations that occur. So with that being, you know, in my, front of my mind, I would like to thank the members of this board. We have made some tough decisions. We have been ridiculed and ostracized for some of the decisions we made. We've been given thank yous and praises for some of the decisions that we made. Because we make our decisions not lightly. We take the research that's available to us, and we kind of use, I think, good practical common sense. What we all feel in our gut is the best thing to do to keep the staff and students in this district safe. Although, as Mr. Monk reported, that the county infections rate is above 10%, I think he said 16%, and we're in that county, in the county. But we're, I'm glad to see that we have had less than 1% infection rate reported in the school district. But even with that, this board has been nimble enough to change directions that from what previous decisions that we made in the directions that we go regarding how we disseminate educational instructions to our students based on the recommendation of our administration. We were one of the first schools in the county to go back to remote learning in most of our environments, and we did that last Monday prior to the announcement of the huge outbreak, prior to the governors making the call to go back remotely at the high school level. We, we sort of saw the writing on the wall and did it immediately. Also with the, with the proposal that the superintendent put before us from at the end of, after the Thanksgiving break, that we not go back to school in the blended model, excuse me, the hybrid model for two weeks because that's the incubation period. Now, other districts are looking at that, and we did the same thing for the winter, I mean, excuse me, the Christmas break or the winter break, to not return students back to the hybrid model learning until after January the 8th, 17th, I think, because we want, again, thinking forward, wanted to have that incubation period passed because we all realize that Michigan, you're not gonna be hanging out outside too much during, during Thanksgiving and during Christmas and New Years. And oftentimes, those, you know, bring gatherings of family and other people, and we unmasking because we feel comfortable for our family with, you know, adult beverages are involved. And we get, you know, we get, you know, we get complacent, or we get comfortable in the environment we in, and that's how the, the, you know, the, the disease virus spreads. So we were ahead of the curb in a lot of regards, and I'd like to thank the administration and the board for taking those bold stands and putting us in an environment where we keep our staff and our students safe, even though our numbers in our schools aren't blowing off the charts, but we're being proactive in that regard. I would like to welcome aboard Board Member-elect Stephanie O'Neil and Jamie Collins. Your service is soon, will begin in January, so prepare yourself. And I will be getting in contact with you in the very near future regarding procedural things to get you moving in the right direction as you come on to, to the board. To my colleagues that are leaving the board after eight years, Mr. Ed Brewley and Ms. Christina Escalante. It's been my privilege and pleasure and honor to have worked with you for over, over the last eight years. We've made a lot of tough decisions as a board during the last eight years, and I would say that this district is in a better position eight years later than it was when the two of you came on to this board. So I'd like to thank you for your service, for your dedication, for your termination. Mr. Brewley, thank you for your thoughtful questions because you come up with questions that nobody else thought about or thought to ask. Your, your perspective on issues was always, you know, from a different perspective than, than the rest of us, and I respect and appreciated that, and your guidance and leadership on the board as we dealt with how to strategize and mobilize for bond initiatives and other matters of importance to the board and to the community. Ms. Escalante, I'm enjoying working with you, meeting your family. You always brought that mother's perspective to the table, meeting your husband, your mother-in-law, and of course, your children. I miss you harassing me about helping at Seminole on the popcorn day, and also learned over eight years that I signed your high school diploma, and then years later, I had the opportunity and privilege and pleasure of working with you on, on the board. So to both my colleagues that will be exiting at the end of December, thank you, thank you, thank you. Be safe. Enjoy the holidays as best you can, but as everybody itself has stated in front of me, be safe, be vigilant. COVID fatigue is a reality, but COVID, the disease, is a reality. Stay safe, mask up, wash your hands, keep social distancing, and hang in there because we're in this together, and we're gonna beat this thing together. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Moved by member Monk.
Support.
Second member, Escalante. Call roll, please.
Hey, Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Really?
Yes.
Ms. Jared?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman.
At 8:13 in the PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.